If you all will join me, let's get started. If you'll stand, we'll have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for a beautiful Monday, and we just pray that you will guide us through this hearing, give folks a chance to ask questions, express their views, give us a chance to express ours. Thank you for this process, and we just appreciate the guidance that you've provided for us thus far. May every decision that we make be in the best interest of this county. We just turn this agenda item over to you, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everyone, especially our guests that don't typically come. We've got plenty of county employees here, but for those of you that have come, maybe a first time, or just want to know what's going on, or ask some questions, we're going to give you an opportunity to do that. We've got a couple of microphones here, and we film this, as we do with each agenda. It's being recorded, video, and audio, so folks at home like to watch, and they'd like to hear your comments. So anybody that speaks, I'm going to ask you to come up to the microphone, or we'll pass you a microphone. But we're here today to conduct a couple of items of business that have to do with our annual budget and setting of the tax rate process. Then we have a couple of add-on items that are just some general county business that we squeezed in here before our next Monday meeting, rather than waiting a month. Our first order of business is to open a public hearing regarding the proposed 2019 and '20 budget, and we have this each year. This is the one and only budget hearing. We will come right after that and have another second hearing regarding our proposed 2019 tax rate. We had our first hearing for the tax rate back last Thursday. We're required to have two, in this case, because we are deviating from our proposed rate that we set a couple of weeks ago. So at this time, as I did the other night, just for the benefit of those of you that were not here, I'll read a brief statement about the tax rate, and maybe that will help you with your questions regarding the proposed budget. And as soon as I'm done there, I'll invite anybody that would like to ask questions or make comments. All right? On August 26, the court proposed a 2019 tax rate of 50.85. This was a no-change rate over the prior year, and the proposal passed three to two. At that time, I thought that this rate was below both the effective rate and the rollback rate. Subsequent to this proposal, four days later, in fact, we realized that the effective rate was lower than that proposed 50.85, and we did not want to exceed the effective rate. We figured out that it was lower than our proposal because of two things. One, the county's overall property valuations increased significantly. We suffered a decade of declining values, primarily as a result of the power plant reductions, so an increase was not the norm. This increase, however, was not readily apparent. When we were comparing the new 2019 current-year valuations with last year's 2018 valuations, there appeared to be a slight overall decrease, but, as it turns out, this was not the case due to this next item, too. The Luminate valuation lawsuit was settled in late fall of last year. This was after the county property valuations, and the 2018 county tax rate and budget were already filed. The settlement with Luminate resulted in a $187 million reduction to last year's tax base, and thereby, this set a new benchmark when comparing to the new current 2019 valuation. It was essentially a mid-year property value adjustment, something that's very unique. In fact, I'm not sure it's happened in anybody's memory. When we were com- so, when we were comparing the 2019 property values to last year's values, we were using an incorrect beginning baseline, and we missed the significant increase in property values. Once we realized the error and compared the 2019 values to last year's Luminate settlement-adjusted 2018 value, this produced an effective tax rate that was lower than last year's tax rate. We don't want to exceed the effective rate or the rollback rate, so we need to adjust our proposed rate down to 47.42 instead of 50.85. This has required two separate tax rate hearings, one today and one last Thursday. The good news in all of this is that we will be able to reduce the current tax rate by over three cents. I apologize for this error and the confusion. Perhaps this rate reduction is going to enable us to have a consensus when we vote for the final tax rate at next Monday's meeting. The bad news is that we're not going to collect additional maintenance and operation funds that we had planned on to use for our annex building project. If this project continues to get support from the court, in the future, we may have to borrow funds to accomplish that project. All right. Commissioners, anybody want to add anything to that, or clarify anything, before I turn it over and invite public comment? All right. At this time, I'm going to open the floor. Anybody with any question, any comment, come on up to the podium. No need to be shy, it's a close-knit group here, and we welcome comments. We had good comments, good questions at our last meeting. You'll need to come up and gra- or we'll send you a mic.
My name's Teresa Carle. Can any of you tell me how much in past due taxes there are on the roll?
How much past due taxes?
Property taxes are on the roll.
No, I can't. We can get that information real quickly for you, but I don't know.
Have you ever considered adding pressure to have those collected on a more timely basis before you look at increasing the taxes on those that are paying our taxes?
We had a report from our individual that is responsible for putting that pressure on about a year and a half ago, and at that time, felt like the collections were doing well, but-
We're historically collecting 97, 98% of collections.
Do you know the dollar figure?
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. It's 97, 98%.
Yearly?
Yeah.
So they're just added, each year, more and more added, or how?
More added, more are collected.
There is more added, more collected, as they are collected. We get a report that shows that because the attorney that is under legal tax, the attorney collects, he has paid a commission, he has paid a fee, when they pay their taxes late, they have to pay that currency, they will pay, and then wants to write something, see example, all the time, so. He's collected, and he writes, when there's property that's been foreclosed on, that's put up for sale, he can write this report.
Well, and that's what is brought up, as for foreclosure, and is put up for sale. That's mine, you. So what's happening with the others?
I thought it said, I think last month, we paid him $7,000?
I think so.
Okay. $10,000, and she's collecting 18%. And I knew that pretty quickly, because I don't know she collected.
But aren't there millions of dollars out there that aren't paid? So that math doesn't add up.
We probably several, maybe.
I doubt if there's millions of dollars out there.
Just a few years ago, there was over $5 million.
Of uncollected taxes?
A lot of taxes, and some of them went back years and years and years.
Doesn't sound like good information to me.
And I'm hearing the number of over a million, just in the last few months.
I don't know. We could get that information. You know, if you have some specific situations you'd like me to look into, I'll be glad-
No, specific. I would just think that you would put pressure to collect before you turn around and ask them more for us that are paying on a timely basis.
Like I said, we do put pressure on through our attorney that handles this.
I mean, through arbitration, I'm paying 227% more on one piece of property than what they had slammed me for. And I just don't think it's fair that those of us that are paying ours on a timely basis sit there and see in the papers where $1,200 is being collected on individual pieces of property. There's got to be some more larger pieces that make up those over millions of dollars.
Could be. I'll be glad to direct you to anybody that you want to talk to to get those figures.
I don't need to talk to, but this affects the money that you are spending, and you all are asking from us.
It does.
So I think it's only fair that you do everything possible to apply the pressure to collect it.
Okay.
That's all.
Hudson Hole, I'm the East Texas Journal. Carl, how much money did the 50 cent rate collect last year?
50 cent rate, well, it collected, on our budget, it collected 9,896,733.
9.8 million?
Yeah, 9.9 million, roughly.
And what's 47 cents going to collect this year?
10,062. It's 165,000. 165,000.
So what was it? What did the effective rate settle at?
This year?
Yeah.
Effective rate settled at 47.42.
That's what we're going to, effective rate.
I thought that'd be the amount of money that, that'd be the rate that raises, the same amount of money.
It is.
There are some adjustments.
Any new properties, it's not included or not.
Okay.
And I get that number from her, and it was 170. According to appraisal district property tax, if it needs to be raised, new property added to tax rolls this year is 179,000. That's all right.
179 million in new properties?
179,000.
Tax dollars raised from new property added.
To be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year is 179,000. What could it be?
Can that work both ways, though, too, in a certain situation where your effective rate doesn't quite raise what the prior year did? Is that possible? If enough, I mean, it's not realistic, but it's possible if enough property was removed from the rolls, or does it not work that way?
I don't think it would work that way.
So the effective rate is always going to bring in a little more than last year's?
Not if you've had no new property added.
Zero new property added would produce a dollar-for-dollar collection based on an effective rate? Okay.
I'm trying to understand, too. We dropped a nickel. INS rate last year was 12 cents, more or less, right?
Yeah, it was 12.33, and it's gone to 7.62.
And we dropped a nickel off of that?
Almost a four and a half cents.
Okay.
Part of that came from a bond paid off, which was 230,000 a year, which is basically a pay.
I understand that part.
The rest of it came, or we're using, what the court decided to do is we had $6 million between the construction fund money left over.
That was in the INS, I got it, I got it. That was in the INS fund, start with.
Well, it was, it was in the construction fund. It is now being rolled with INS, since the construction, since we settled the lawsuit with the bridge, and closed that fund.
I'm just curious now, was that money, I thought construction money was INS money?
No. Well, it has to stand in construction fund until you finish the construction.
Did it originally come from, as part of that, from the interest and sinking rate?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it came from there, and it came from donations from the different companies.
It did not come from the maintenance and operation. It was money that was dedicated to debt to start with.
It was dedicated to construction projects, so, and the $2.4 million in there, too.
Was it dedicated to debt before it was dedicated to the construction project?
No.
It wasn't part of the, where'd it come from?
It came from the proceeds of the bond, the money you borrowed.
Right.
It's not the money to pay the bond back. That comes from INS. The money that, if you buy a truck, you borrow money to make to buy a truck, the money you borrowed to buy the truck, it's not available to pay the bond back, because you bought the truck.
That was bond money?
That was the bond. That's what, that's the money that we used.
Didn't we dedicate?
What you have to do is-
Didn't we dedicate tax money to pay that bond?
To make the payments, yes.
Okay. Is that tax money known as INS money?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the money?
Suit yourself, thanks. The money you borrowed, if you borrowed money, that's to buy a truck, the truck's going to cost $30,000.
Okay.
And you don't borrow $30,000 of the money, and you pay $30,000 for the truck.
Right.
And you have to pull money from somewhere else to make those payments. That's what the INS money is.
Mm-hmm.
If, when you bought the truck, you got a $2,000 rebate, if you've got that $2,000 left over, then you can also roll that in a five to pay the debt back. That's basically what this is. This was, we had a-
It sounds to me, it sounds to me like that money from the start, I'm just going to give up on that one, it's one I can't understand. It sounds to me like that money from the start, as far as tax money was concerned, would be money that was going toward debt.
Yeah, it will go towards debt if you don't use it still for good.
Right, okay, okay.
We can't end on the budget.
One more question. So we're going up, we're raising 179,000 more dollars for M&amp;O than last year.
Right.
We're increasing, the budget increases, each measure's increasing by 100,000 on road and bridge.
That's right.
And you've got 305,000 for a fire truck.
That's right.
Yeah, so where's that money coming from?
70,000, well, but ultimately, that money, based on budget, will come out of the front balance, or the balance will go down by about 200,000.
So we are going to be 200,000?
Well, maybe 400,000. If you spend all the money, we're starting the year, we're estimating, starting the year with $5,500 million, and then two, yeah, the front balance.
Mm-hmm.
If we spend all the money that's budgeted, which we don't usually do, if we did spend all the money that's budgeted, at the end of the year, your front balance will be 4.4. So you would have spent a big $1,500 of your money, of your front balance.
So this budget, this budget proposes spending a million out of cash reserve?
That's right.
Okay.
And we've done that for-
Years and years.
Several years.
Never spent all the money. Now, the, back to the INS question, where that comes from, if there was a million five that was left over of the original construction money, we collected 900,000 in the lawsuit, that's worth the $2.5 million that's in the construction fund, but now that the lawsuit's settled, we don't have to worry about paying attorney's fees or anything else out of that money, then we're going to roll that over to the INS and pay it on the debt. That's why we lowered the INS debt rate by five cents, because we're using that money to pay down on that debt out of reserves instead of tax rate. If you didn't do that, then you would have only lowered the INS rate by two, by a penny.
I can use a word, I think it's short for letters, man. Your money was dedicated to debt, start with.
Well, it was dedicated to the construction fund, and if we had gone over budget, we would have spent all that money plus, we'd have had to pull some money.
Yeah, we didn't borrow money to pay debt. We borrowed money-
To build it.
-to pay a project.
It just so happened we came in on-
You borrowed money.
Correct.
Wait a minute. I'm gonna, if you, if you've got interest, and you know the little chart in our, in our financial statement from the end of the year, how much principal we got owed, how much interest we owe, and you've set up here bonds that we borrowed money, I thought that's what I, the interest was, the money we borrowed or sold bonds to build the loop. So now, you're telling me we can't pay those bonds back until a certain date, okay?
We can make our normal payments, we just get a creep back.
Right, and that's been about $6 million a year, up until last year, dropped to fives, nine.
Well, our part's been about 2.5 million, and now it's down to 1.5 million. It was, it was 2.5 million, when we refinanced the 2009 and the 2007 bonds, we ran, we'll get a little better interest rate, then lowered it from 2.5 to maybe 2.2, and now we've paid off one of the, one of the old bonds, I'm constructing, I blew one, but the old, right one, that's 200,000, so that lowers it from 2.2 to 2, and we're taking about 400,000 and paying out of this construction money that's left over.
I'm not sure that's answering his question.
No.
Tell me what your question is, because I'd like to answer it.
Well, the question is, that we, in that amortization sheet or whatever, it had principal in it, and that it was about showing how much of money we had to pay each year on the debt.
It's like, almost $11 million a year.
And interest was over 150,000, but interest on that loan was like, or still was, I don't know, it was 100 and some thousand just a couple of years or two ago.
Per, per year?
Million, million.
Yeah.
100 million per year, no.
No.
For the whole amortization sheet, 2034.
Yeah.
You know, the one I'm talking about?
Right.
And how, I don't see how we could reduce it 7%.
No, it's not, it's not 100 million. It's not, the total interest is not 100 million.
But it might be close to that when you add it up for 15 years, but-
No, it's not even close to it, not even close to it. Because the difference in what we pay to text, I mean, what we receive from text doc and what we pay on the bonds each year is roughly $2 million, times 20 years is 40 million.
Interest was about $6 million just three or four years ago.
But it is going-
It's always high in the early years, just like on a house note.
Yeah. The amortization schedule's there, but the total, the total payment on that debt's just a little under $11 million a year, because the safe base, eight and a half.
Eight and a half.
And we pay the other 2.2 million.
I'm glad to see it.
But you're right, I think the point is, that loop project costs the county a lot of money. Yeah, it does, about 2.2 million net per year over nearly 20 years. Okay, we're still in our, in our budget hearing. Anybody have budget comments? If not, all-
I have a lot of questions about the budget.
Well, this is, this is budget hearing, but this is more or less for the public. But you can go, I mean, you can go ahead and make your comments, I'm just making sure the public doesn't have any questions.
Okay, that's the reason that I complain we don't have the meetings at night, so people that are working can come to the meetings. That's the reason we don't have a public, we had a nice crowd at 6 o'clock, but nobody wants to work during the day, and I guess it's better if we keep it from the public. I really don't understand my fellow commissioners not wanting to have the meeting, some of the meetings in the evening, but that's the way it is. I have a lot of questions about the budget.
Well, you're, I mean, you have questions or comments? I mean, we went through the entire budget process, I don't know what questions are left, other than just bringing up the same issues that you've had in the past, and you're welcome to do that.
Okay. I'd like to, first thing I'd like to know is, what is a $300,000 for contingents? It's line 409-495, page 6 on the budget here, on the big budget.
That's what it is, it's a contingency, in case something comes up that the court's not aware of. Remember, no money can be moved, no line can be moved without the court's approval, but that's, that's basically what that is, that's a contingency line inside that budget, inside, inside your precinct budget, usually there's a little contingency, there might not be any history, but it's only put it all in.
Love that, Michael.
But that's, that number's been that for several years. It's the same number this year as it was last year.
We're still going to put the, what's left over in the road and bridge budgets, in the contingent, another line?
Whatever is left over in y'all's budgets at the end of this year, we will roll it over to next year, but you will have to have a budget amendment. I don't know what that number's going to be, because I don't know how much y'all are going to use up to get. So whatever you don't spend out of your budgets this year, will get rolled over to next year. And at that time, probably in November, your funnel and number November, Barbara will bring a budget amendment for y'all to approve for each precinct to move the money over to the current year.
The other thing is the, is the city fire, Mount Pleasant City Fire Department. I'd just like for people, my fellow commissioners, to know, know some of the facts that wasn't here. The total city fire department is like $3 million. We're paying 1.2 million this year by putting that 303. But I'd like, how, how much, and this is not about the fire department, we've got a good fire department, I think we've got a good fire department, we're talking about who's paying the bill. I think it's the county, county people that are paying the bill. They got, other people have county-
County and city. City people pay county tax.
Yeah. Okay, well, I think, I think we've really increased the spending to the, to the city, to the fire department, the city fire department.
You're right.
And we've, it's pretty unbelievable. We had a 10-year contract, and it was about $390,000, almost $400,000 a year. We decided, they, they wanted to have a meeting, the fire department, they said that they needed, volunteer firemen were hard to get, so they needed somebody during the middle of the day when our firemen were out working. So we decided to give them, they had said three, three firemen was a shift, so we give them 3,000, we give them three firemen. They said it'd cost $60,000 a year for their uniforms and their salaries and benefits. So we give them 180 more thousand, that's in 2016, I think, to make a day shift so they could have in the middle of the day. They come back last year, and they asked for, well, they asked for about 500,000 more dollars to spend to it. But anyway, that, with that 180,000, that made us, we raised them to 553,000 a year. Now, county fire departments, Hopkins County has a county fire department. They got some thieves going on there, they caught some of them swindling money, but their budget's about $4 million, and they don't have any city help. They have a central, they have a chief and nine employees, and that's all their budget is. And here, here we are, paying 553 for that. Then we, then, in 2017, we decided to give them some more money. They wanted, well, like I say, they come in asking for 500, and finally, we agreed to a little over 400, but that, so we're paying them 874,000 now to help the county fire department. Now, remember, the county, the county powered interior firemen, we own, we pay all those bills, like the rent, or whatever we've got, the equipment and everything, don't cost the city anything. So now, now we're going to pay for half of a truck, 305,000, so that's going to be a million, too, that we pay the, the city, and the city's budget is like about $3 million. So it's, the county, the county's paying the bills, and I think that, I think that, I think it's a little over, overkill. I think it's a lot overkill, I think it's ridiculous, to tell you the truth.
Do you have an alternative?
Yes, sir.
I would love-
Start of county.
I would love to hear you come up with an alternative plan. I'm, and I'm serious when I say that. I'd love to see a way where we could accomplish and provide the same level of fire protection for less money.
We can, there's lots of people with, with county fire departments. We can, there's lots of people with, with county fire departments. And, and the thing that's really, uh, left out is the fact that the volunteer firemen are close to the fire. That's where they are. The city's got to come from the city out to the fire. I grew up in Sugar, that's 12 miles. You've got to, you've got, ain't no going to be anything left when the city gets there anyhow. You know what? It's a, it's, we need a, we need a, the volunteer fire department and we need them to staff them and that's, that may be the answer. Uh, other counties that I've talked to, they use Hopkins County as a, as a model. So they got them, one of the best, best county fire departments there. They don't depend on anybody's city department. Wood County, I think, has Mineola has a city, but they don't depend on them. They don't have any trouble getting volunteers. And we, some of our, some of our volunteer fire departments don't have any trouble getting volunteers. Some of them do. We probably all know who those are. Okay? I don't, I, that's what I think about the fire department. We need to do something about it. And we need to start a county fire department, cause the city is not going to let up.
That would be a great project for you to begin work on is, is coming up with a plan to replace the city. That would be fantastic.
It's not, not much, not much of a plan to work on. Hire, hire a man to be in charge of it and let him hire some help this experience and got some, got some.
Well, we'll be discussing that, I'm sure, this year as we gear up for renegotiation of the city contract. There'll be all kinds of opportunities there. You know, in the meantime, I, I'd strongly encourage you to go and visit with Chief McCray. Let him, let him tell you what his opinions are. You don't have to agree with him. Let him at least share his opinion with you. Anyway, what else have you got?
I've got the agri-life county extension agents. I don't know whether people are aware of this, but the average county is, county extension agent in the state of Texas makes 72,786 dollars. We supplement our two county agents, they got to split it, 20,160 dollars a year salary. We just give it to them. And then we, uh, then we give them 13,000, that's 6,500 each. Car allowance unaccountable. That means that the county taxpayers have to throw another seven and a half percent in there for Medicare and Social Security. And now they come to the meeting last week and we've got it in the budget, they asked for 3,500 more dollars to go to travel and seminars. And they're talking about going to other counties. Why does a state, Titus County have to pay all this? These are state employees, we don't even know, we've, we don't know whether, what they do or what, what they're going to do. And then we want to pay for them to travel to other counties. And then we furnish them a clerk and it's 40 something thousand dollars a year because we pay all the bills. We don't even know whether the clerk comes to work or not. We have no say-so what she does, what her duties are, any kind of job description for her, but we pay for it.
I know that she comes to work, cause I actually go up there.
I know the lady and this lady is right on the, I guarantee she's at work. I know her personally. That's not the point. We've got another.
You made it a point. You said you don't know if she goes to work, she goes to work.
We don't have any control, is the point. We don't know what they do or anything.
We don't, we don't have to fund it. We don't have to fund that.
Well, a lot of counties don't. Some of them do. But that's, uh, I called a lot of them. And the other one, the next thing is DPS clerk. We have a clerk that works at DPS. It costs us over 40,000 dollars a year. I don't even know her name, don't know what she does or anything. She works for the DPS.
Ramona. Ramona's her name.
Well, DPS come up here and say, well, two years ago, says, well, they cut our budget, the state did. And so if we lose, uh, we had, we're not, we're short anyhow and if we lose this clerk, we'll have to take somebody off the street and put them in the office. But it's always funny when you, we see, they always got five or six of them lined up here saying they can't do without it. I hope we don't have any need for, for them at that time. They must have a little spare time. So I think it's a little bit, I think it's ridiculous for us to spend that much money to furnish them a clerk. On that Ag building, we pay maintenance, cleaning, janitorial supply, we pay 94,610,000. On the, apparently the clerk at the DPS, I got a receipt here from Furman Office, by 171, delivered to North Jefferson and the bill comes to this, the county, we pay the bills. They ordered pencils, this receipt shows, uh, 45 dollars for some pens and some, some scratch pads and all this kind of stuff. So they just order office supplies and send us the bill. And I'm sure that's true on this Ag building. So we pay the bill. We don't even know what they order, why they ordering it. One of them was jelly pens. What a jelly pen is, but anyway. This is, uh, kind of loose with the taxpayer's money. As a taxpayer, I don't appreciate it and I hope that the other taxpayers, but the other, the taxpayers, I don't think they realize that you're looking to these four commissioners and this judge and we control. We take this money from you and we spend it willy-nilly and I think it's, I think we need to stop. And, uh, and of course, I've said that for six and a half years, so, but anyway, taxpayers aren't aware of some of the stuff that goes on. That's all I got to say.
All right, anyone else? And we'll bring the budget hearing to a close. All right, at 9:40, we will bring item number one, the public hearing regarding the 2019-20 budget to a close. We will now move into item number two, public hearing regarding the proposed 2019 tax rate, just as we did last Thursday evening. Once again, 47.42 cents. So we'll open the floor now for any questions or comments regarding our new tax rate.
Will that include the extra 305 for the fire truck?
It does.
Includes a 3,500 for the county agents' travel?
Well, this is a tax rate, it's not a budget. The budget includes that.
But the tax rate will cover it.
The tax rate is the amount of money that we're going to raise based on the same collections as the prior year or the effective tax rate. As Carl explained a moment ago, according to our budget, if we spend every dime in our budget, we will reduce our fund balance from the beginning of this year, October 1, to the end. So I'm not, I think I'm answering your question correctly. Yes, all that has been factored into this tax rate. All right. Questions, comments on proposed 47.42 tax rate? All right, I will bring our tax rate hearing to a close. That leaves us with two other agenda items that we would normally handle during a normal commissioner's court meeting, such as last week. We tabled one item, this item number three, and rather than waiting until next Monday, we opted to put it on today's agenda. So I'm going to move into item number three, and this was tabled from last week. And the agenda item is to consider and possibly enter into an interlocal contract with the Texas Department of Information Resources regarding an election security assessment plan. And Pam answered some questions and brought you some information last week and there was some, uh, concern and hesitation and I think it was a good idea for us to have tabled this. So Pam has sent at least one other, uh, bit of information to you via email. And Pam, if you'd come up to the mic for us, please, and just tell us a little bit more about what you learned when you contacted Red River County. And Red River County is, uh, a county that has already gone through this audit or assessment process. And, uh, you've shared that with us, but, but go ahead and share that publicly, what you found out there.
Sure. I did contact Ms. Sean Weems, who's the county clerk at Red River County. And I just was asking her how that went, because I had understood that they had already completed theirs. And she said, oh yes, we were one of the first counties in the state to get it completed. And, um.
And they voluntarily requested it at that time?
Yes. It was before, excuse me, it was before it was made mandatory through House Bill 1421 that they completed their assessment. And, um, so she just, all she had to say was that Gene Moore and his team from AT&amp;T, they performed their information gathering process over the course of two days and it was a painless procedure. And that's her very words. And then they were going to be moving on to Fannin and Bonham Counties after they got done with her. So it is happening across the state. And then she went on to say that the report's not public, but it's designed to help counties to update their security procedures to meet the necessary standard of the day. So, um, and then I know another thing that was brought up at the last, um, meeting that, why couldn't we get our own third-party vendor? I contacted the state this morning and I spoke with Ms. Amanda. And, um, she said that, I was asking her if funds would be available to us to pay for a third-party vendor and she said that no, because the, the state has contracted with DIR and cyber defenses and, and then ultimately AT&amp;T. So if we decide to choose a, a different vendor to do our security assessment, which we, I think I've already made it pretty clear, it is a mandatory thing at this time. Uh, but if we choose to go with a different vendor, then we're, the county will have to bear that cost.
And did it, does, does Red River County feel like it was beneficial to them?
Yes.
In fact, I think you said, you know, as an audit typically does, it brings out weaknesses and problems. And it identified for them some weaknesses and problems.
Exactly.
We could expect the same thing, but that's how we improve.
Right. And, uh, also some, some concern has been expressed to me about the, the hurry to get this pushed through. And, um, I don't really, I don't want you to feel like I'm railroading you or asking you for something, to do something in a hurry without getting full information, um, because, but it is something that should have been addressed this time last year. And, um, as you know, I was not here this time last year and, um, it was, the importance of, and, um, the fact that it was made mandatory was brought out in the election law seminar that I attended at, at the end of July. And so, um, it, and now we have a deadline of December 31st of this year to get it done. So.
Any security issues or concerns that were conveyed to you by Red River County?
None at all.
I mean, that's been, that, that was a little bit of our concern, was, was there any security issues that ought to make us think twice?
And you know, I neglected to ask her if they used electronic ballots or if they actually do paper ballots, but, uh, we do paper ballots here in Titus County.
I'm quite sure they do paper ballots in Red River.
We, we still do paper ballots here in Titus County and I want to keep it that way because that is, that is ultimately, if there's any challenge or question, you have your backup to go to.
Commissioners, any questions for Pam?
Yeah, I, I, Red River County, are you familiar with Red River County at all? You and Judge Lee, he should know that county. That's about the poorest county in this part of the world.
I am not familiar with Red River County. As a matter of fact, that's the first time I talked to Ms. Sean.
I'd probably say you even have a computer. I'm shocked if they do. It's a, it's a, I, of course, y'all know my feelings.
Oh, nobody's from Red River.
I definitely read where they will pay for it. We can select a vendor and they will pay for it. Maybe I misread it, but I'll look it up and show it to you, but it's okay. Y'all already made your mind up. I think you're making mistakes to rush into this, but that's your choice. I can say I told you so. It works.
Yes, sir.
There you go.
Questions, anyone? All right, what would you all like to do here?
I'd like to table it till I learn more about it.
Okay, got a motion on the floor to table this item again? If there's no second, I will ask if there's any other action you would like to take today.
I make a motion that we have them do it instead of paying somebody else.
So your motion would be as, as worded, that we enter into an interlocal contract with TDIR?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Fitch that we do enter into an interlocal contract with Texas Department of Information Resources to conduct an election security assessment. Seconds by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have an opposed commissioner?
No, no.
Okay, we have a unanimous vote. Excellent.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead and do it. It ain't our money.
Item number, no, it's not our money.
No.
It's not our money, right? It's not our money.
No.
Okay. We will now bring in our consultants from Higginbotham. Toni Melton, I believe, is waiting in the wings outside to discuss with us a quote that we've received from Texas Association of Counties to consider for our county health insurance. So anybody in here is welcome to sit in and listen to this. Our main topics for the day, which were our two hearings, are obviously come to a close, but our meeting is still going to go on. So we'll take a break for a couple of minutes and let Toni and her staff come in. All right, first of all, thank you, uh, ladies for helping us with this mid-year proposal from TAC. Thank you to the Auditor's Office for putting together some data that was provided to TAC and thanks to Commissioner Fitch for, uh, getting this idea going. It never hurts to look and see what other options are out there. Toni, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. So the first sheet that you've got on your top is just, um, a spreadsheet of the fully insured proposals. Obviously, the county is currently self-funded and that benefit plan is in your green column. The TAC proposal is sort of a UT Texas color, burnt orange. And, um, United Healthcare, I went ahead just and asked them to provide a fully insured option so that you could see all your alternatives. So United Healthcare's options are in purple.
Say that again. I want these guys to understand, we're, we're looking today at not only the proposal from TAC that we just got, but you said, since this is a fully insured plan, let's see what UMR could do to come up with figures on a fully insured plan. Right now, we have a self-funded plan, so all these are not really comparing apples and apples, but some of the attributes will be comparable and so, and we can look and see how the cost goes. And then we'll have a discussion about what the implications are of leaving a self-funded plan.
Yeah, and so TAC only gave you one option, which is that, the thousand-dollar deductible option. What United Healthcare did is they gave you an option that mirrors your current self-funded plan. That's the first, that's the BCYT mod plan. Then the other plan over is a plan that actually mirrors the TAC proposal as closely as they could. You follow me?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, do you want to go through this line by line to compare each of the benefit options?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So on the TAC proposal, it is with the Blue Cross Blue Choice Network, which is a great network. The in-network deductible is a thousand dollars for an individual, 3,000 for a family. You see, that's just a little bit less than what you currently have with UMR. The out-of-pocket maximum, which is, we combine the deductible as well as the out-of-pocket together, is 4,000. I'm just going to stay in-network, cause that's basically what most people do anyway. But just know you've got out-of-network coverage for, if that should come up. Is a 4,000 dollar. Is a $4,000 out-of-network, I mean, out-of-pocket maximum on the TAC plan. Family is 12. Again, a little bit less than, on both of those, than your current UMR. 80% co-insurance if you're in the network. They match the physician's office copay of $30, as well as the specialist copay of $30. The urgent care is actually at $30 as well on this plan, as opposed to the $75 urgent care that you currently have. Diagnostic procedures outpatient lab, an x-ray just would be included in copay, the same it is now if it's done in the doctor's office. Complex imaging, PET scans, CAT scans, those kind of things are going to be deductible co-insurance, just as you have now. Hospital, because you're self-funded, you could do that true emergency deal, which you don't have the option of doing that on a fully insured plan. So just know that it, that would go away if you moved to fully insured, but you would still have $150 copay should you present at the emergency room and then deductible co-insurance. Drug card is, and you see what it is, it's just, it's 10, 30, 50, and 50. Again, there was not a separate specialty copay like you have created through your self-funded Now, again, right now, you are funding $1,000 toward your claims fund every month per employee, right, Carl?
Yeah.
Okay. So we gave that information to TAC, and TAC came back and said, okay, so your employee-only rate would be 925. And then below there, you see the dependent costs, which Jessica has then put under payroll deductions to illustrate the employees' cost would be zero. And then you see what the employees would pay toward dependents, which is less than what you are currently allocating for your employees to pay now. This is based upon 141 people, which is what you currently have enrolled, and getting your monthly total on this, $130,425,000. The annual total, 1.5 billion approximately. Questions about the TAC proposal?
And we have not factored, well, we, another differential that even further widens the gap is the fact that we're having to pay stop-loss insurance that you wouldn't pay under a fully funded plan.
Right, correct. And we've got an estimated total of what you paid with 2018 claims, and your stop-loss coverage is about 1.8 is what you paid in 2018.
Combined, the combined...
Your admin cost, your stop-loss cost, and your total claims. Your total claims for last year were 1,003,593. That's a lot of decimals, but, so a little over a million is what you paid in claims last year. And then you had admin fees and stop-loss of an annual amount of $812,766.
That's not a lot of sales, but...
It's, yeah, these are the rates we used. They're about right? That's your admin, your stop-loss is this.
Yeah.
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 So, anyway, you know, and let me just say, as we talk about fully insured versus self-funded, y'all know the difference, right? Or do you know the difference? Fully insured is basically you're paying a premium. You pay the premium regardless of what claims happen. If everybody goes to pecking a handbasket, you're still paying that same premium. You're not paying claims. You're paying this amount of money. Next year, they will look at your claims. What had, if you're still running well, and you're running literally 27% below last year on claims, and the third thing I've given you is your last PACE report from UMR. So based upon what, this, through August, you're 27.3% below where you were this same time last year, just in claims cost. So when you're comparing a fully insured to a self-funded proposal, there's really not a whole lot of similarities that you need to know. I mean, other than we can, we marry the plan as close as we can, but it's a whole different concept. I asked one of the other people in the office that handles Franklin County, and Franklin County is, has gotten about a 3% rate increase every year from TAC. They're fully insured with TAC. I can't guarantee what United Healthcare would be because that's a little bit different criteria.
In the case of TAC and UMR going fully insured, when they, when you say they look at your history this year to determine rates next year, do they really zero in and carve us out and look at us to determine our rate, or do they look at the whole pool?
Well, they look at the pool, but they also look at you. If you've got claims that are running over $15,000, then those are considered high claims, right? So they're going to say, how many people you got running, running over? And then, then they'll categorize it, if it's anybody over $100,000, how many are over $50,000, how many over, just breaking it down all the way. And then they'll look and see, is this one and done, or is this ongoing? If you've got an ongoing situation, like an ongoing cancer, somebody maybe with diabetes that is not doing what they need to do as far as medication and diet, and that could be a bad ongoing condition there. I mean, we don't think of diabetes as a, as a, as a bad thing, but it's just, it can cause so many other things. It can cause heart problems. It can cause a lot of other, other things to happen as well. So, but all fully insured carriers, be it TAC or be it United Healthcare, will look at your claims and decide. Now, TAC's a little bit different because you are in a pool with TAC. You're in a pool with United Healthcare because you're not big enough to be by yourself. Typically, you've got to be over 300 employees to be considered even, to look at by yourself. You're not looked at by just your own claims, even with the UMR, fully, I mean, self-funded proposal, because you're not big enough to be that way. So they're looking at their whole, I mean, when Chris is here, she's saying, the UMR pool of business, she always talks about, you know, how you are comparing that. So you're going to be compared to a pool of people regardless of whether or not you're self-funded or fully insured.
Okay. So you shouldn't take the attitude, oh, we can quit watching our health around here because we're going to be mixed in with the 200 other counties. We still have...
Well, I know there was probably two or three years ago, Jessica and I were trying to remember when it was, when we were listening to a TAC update, just a thing, a webinar deal, and they had had a bad, a bad claims year. So everybody got a higher rate increase. And some counties got a higher, I mean, I'm thinking it was around, what, 6%, something like that, which is still a great renewal. I mean, three to six, you know, for most of my fully insured clients, if they got a three to six rate increase, they'd be jumping for joy. You know, there's, as Jessica, we were talking all the way over, we don't have a crystal ball. We can't predict what's going to happen in the future. The only thing you can do is take the information that we have and try to project where you want to go and what the county feels more comfortable doing. Because we do, I do think that we've given alternatives that are very close to what you have as far as your benefits go, and then you have to decide how you want to handle it financially.
Before we even look at the UMR comparisons, let's talk just about this hack. You know, on this, at first glance, I'm pretty impressed with these numbers. What are the downsides that we need to know about if we were to say, hey, these numbers look great, we want to, we want to do that? What are the downside of jumping into any self, fully funded?
Any fully insured is going to take some of the control away from y'all. Okay? With a self-funded plan, when things have not run the way you wanted them to be handled, or when a claim might have not been paid the way you wanted it to be paid, you can make an exception. Bless you. You can go and you can say, okay, yeah, I know we've done that periodically throughout a plan year. Something was done, and it didn't work the way you wanted it to. You were able to change it as, as the court commissioners. With a fully insured plan, it's the plan's a plan's a plan. I can't change it, y'all can't change it. Al?
Let me, let me see if I'm following you. On a self-funded plan like UMR, we're 27% down this year.
On your claims?
On the claims. That means we, we will save at the end of the year, if we, if we end the year down, we will save 27%?
My rough projections are, if you continue on the same track you're on now, you spent a little over a million dollars last year. If you continue on that same track, you'll pay $822,537 in claims. That's if nothing changes from this point forward. So it's 200,000 less in claims to what you paid last year. But again, I don't have a crystal ball, and neither do y'all.
So we're getting lower, but we're not getting any, any kind of cost reduction on insurance, though. We're going lower on our claims.
Yeah.
But we don't see nothing as coming out of our employees' pocketbook, though.
No, it just stays inside the insurance.
But it's the cost of what your county's paying for the, for the, I mean, y'all control what the employees pay for their insurance. The insurance company doesn't tell you what to charge the employees. That's y'all.
No, we saved 27% right this year.
And it stays inside the insurance fund unless y'all want to do something different with it. When you're a small, you're a small pool, so next year, our numbers grow at 30%, and you need to have that money in there to cover those increases because we're not, we're funded the same amount from year into year. So the cash kind of resists a little bit. This year, yeah, right now, we've got quite a bit of cash in the fund for us.
Right.
Which is $500,000.
And another question is why, well, you had, they're coming next week, y'all couldn't be here next week when they can be here?
What, I'm sorry, what?
TAC. They coming, I guess they could be next week?
I didn't know they were coming next week.
Going to have somebody here Monday.
Oh, I didn't know that. I could have been here next week.
Another thing about those good years with TAC, we have a good year. When we sign up with them, we'll get some benefit back. They have a savings plan, and they pay back surplus shares to the counties. Last four years, they paid back 22.5 million back to the members, to the counties. So we talk about being self-funded, and we have a good year like this year, supposed to be good, saving money. We'll still save money having a good year with TAC.
That is true. And they determine how much they're going to give you.
Yes. Also, this, this plan, we're having a good year this year, and I figured, my figures we're going to be out at the end of the year probably 1.7 million, and this is coming in at 1.565, a little over 1 and 1/2 million.
But you're not having to pay for...
Yeah, we're not paying stop-loss. We're not going to be having to pay for the 1095C forms at the end of the year. We also do a lot of insurance work in our office, and that comes out of the county's office. So the train we're going right now, I feel like we're going to end up having to hire some more people, another lady full-time helped us with our insurance, with all the insurance headaches we're having with all the Affordable Care Act and all these different fees that we have to pay and keeping up with reporting and tracking services. This plan is coming in at 7% lower than what we're paying now. Dental benefits are a tad higher, but it also has a vision insurance. It's got a little vision included in the plan where you can go get your eyes checked for free. It also has the wellness programs at no cost that if we want to apply, we get different newsletters and whatever programs they want to do. There's a lot of wellness programs on here at no cost that also do help us, it's just being proactive and keeping insurance down, keeping people healthy in the county. They have 48,000 members in the pool, which is a huge pool. They're the largest pool of members for Blue Cross Blue Shield, the Texas group. And then, I like that, I lost my train of thought. Out of 254 counties, 221 counties use TAC for their, some form of a health insurance.
Just remember that, as you mentioned wellness.
Yeah.
The biometric screens were provided for you at no cost. That is something that they came on site and did for you.
Yeah, and they pay for us to go get physicals and such every year for free in TAC, so...
Well, so does your UMR coverage. It's 100%.
So, and then they also have free programs that come and do biotype screenings and such in here. They have so many programs, it's unbelievable. It's 80 pages full of different programs.
And again, wellness is something regardless of whoever you're with, you can't force anyone to do a wellness program. That is something that's controlled by the federal government.
Yeah, that's true. Y'all were kind of getting forceful, or our rates were going to go up, and I didn't like that for sure, so, or UMR was.
Yeah.
So that's a lot of things. And also, it's got a $1,000 deductible instead of 1250. It's got 80/20 insurance in network instead of 70/30. That 10% is a chunk out of my pocket. I like all those. And then for spouse, or children, or whole families, it's cheaper coming out of that paycheck for our employees. So I felt like they bid us a pretty good plan. As far as changes, if we want to make changes, they have about 10 plans.
I have a question for y'all.
We could even go up to a plan like this.
When was the last time you were self-funded?
Back during Alfred Flanagan days.
25 years?
25 years.
That'd be before I was here. I don't remember. I don't remember this one being self-funded. Now, maybe we were the first year or two I was here, but I've been here 28 years. I don't remember something, so. But I will say this, I'm kind of like the judge in John P. Dick. Those numbers are very impressive, the fact that, I mean, you're able to cut the full wage cost, and you're able to cut the county's cost. The county's cost is fixed.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not, it's not a win or not.
We write one check a month to them. I like that. And Auditor's Office, I love it. It's going to be simple.
It'll make it a lot easier to do.
One of the things that it stated on there was non-grandfather. What does that mean?
It just means that your plan has, any plan you start would be non-grandfather. The plan you're on now is non-grandfather.
What is that?
It's just after, it was written after Affordable Care Act started in 2010. So any plan that starts after that is considered a non-grandfathered plan.
Has nothing to do with having to qualify for the insurance?
No.
They take our employees and promise coverage regardless of their history?
No, I mean, if you're non-grandfathered, it just means you're subject to all the rules and requirements of ACA.
Okay. So what are other reasons? In other words, beat the devil's advocate and tell me why you should think twice before you leave a self-funded plan?
My only concern, and again, you probably don't have as much problem with this with TAC as you would have with other carriers, is the fact that you don't know how much it's going to go up, because it is going to go up regardless. Even TAC's going to go up a little bit every month, I mean, every year, and you can't control that so much. You can't make a plan, you could make a plan change.
Everything's going up. That's true. There's no doubt. It's never going to come down.
Yeah, I mean, everything's going to go up.
Whatever plan you go.
Yeah. So, and John's right, you can do, you can, you can pick other plans. What they did is they picked one of their canned plans that is, was the most like what your plan was and just went with it. But you could change plans.
Yeah, so when your costs start to go up beyond what you're comfortable with, you say, let's look at plan number seven.
Yeah, change the levels.
Plan number seven and sacrifice a little deductible, a little copay, a little extra cost.
Yep.
Okay.
And the other thing, remember, Judge Lee and I were just going up. Several years ago, we were $600 per, before we did what we put to the plan. Now we're $1,000.
Now we're $1,000.
I mean, we have to adjust dollars over time. We have to adjust the last couple of years. I think the last time we jumped, we went from $900 to $950 to $1,000. So we've gone up some, too, what we've done in this place.
So as our consultants, what are you thinking? I rely on you.
It's obviously less money. So, I mean, if that's your only criteria, it's obviously a better option, and it is going to be, you know exactly what you're paying. The flip side to that is, is you take away the control, and that's the biggest thing, because I know y'all. Y'all like to do things the way you want to do them. And sometimes not being able, that might be, if you haven't changed from a self-funded plan in 27 years, that might be the biggest hurdle to jump through. Is if something doesn't get paid the way you want it to, there's absolutely nothing, and maybe that's good. Maybe you'll like that.
A lot of cheese.
Yeah, exactly.
It makes it more like everybody else in the world. They don't have any control over their insurance, 20, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. What you may have somebody else's...
Well, I feel like we do have control over, because we, we have so many plans we can choose from.
Overriding the way a claim is paid. Yes.
Well, they have people with Blue Cross that'll fight to get your, to pay so much. You know, they're going to pre-approve a lot of services.
Well, you have to do that now.
Yeah.
All that, you have to, every, that the...
A whole lot less calling, sharing to get it done. Instead, you just call your card number and get it done, or your, most providers, most doctors I've been to, I've been on Blue Cross, Blue Shield for, till I became a commissioner, never had a, ink a problem out of any bill and anything.
And let me just tell you, most people call our department, our office, if they've got a claim issue right now. If they've got a problem with UMR, they, they come to us. And then we help them get things paid. We, we help them get whatever's not doing. And of course, we'll do the same thing. You will have the same issues with Blue Cross as you have with United Healthcare.
Yeah, so...
It's, they're insurance companies, and...
What I've had dealings with them, I, I've had really, really good luck with them, and with my family for years. So, yeah, insurance is insurance. It's a big decision here.
So, I didn't know TAC was coming on Monday, next Monday, or I could have come at the same time. I was told to come today. So, is that a problem? Do I need to come back next Monday? So who's coming to see y'all Monday?
I'm not sure. I think Santos.
Okay.
It'd probably be better if we're going to make any decisions.
I'd love to be here when he does come.
Can we make a decision to change, uh, this time of the year?
Yes. If we get it done by October 1st, we'll be able to sign up and it'll, it'll be effective January 1st. So, that's what I've been told. So it's really getting close to the, under the radar here.
One other thing to remember, uh, if you switch, whatever money's in that insurance fund, we'll have to keep it in there for a while, pay claims, but at some point, those claims will drive, and there should be money still left in there that you can put back over to the general county. Put it in a reserve or future insurance cost increases or whatever. I don't have much to pay, but there should be some money left.
A few hundred thousand.
Yeah, because you're going to, you're going to be, they're going to all the way through September 31st.
And then you'll have run out for...
You'll have some, but you'll, you'll stop all the...
Admin.
Stop, the admin and stop-loss coverage and all that, that all.
We also, I was going to make that, we use TAC for our vehicle and our buildings, too, already. So we already are using them as an insurance company. It's been good so far.
Okay. Any other details we ought to zero in on here?
I gave you a United Healthcare proposal. It sounds just like what I'm hearing is that if you move fully insured, you're probably going to TAC, which, uh, again, United Healthcare gave you the, the options to kind of see what, what they could do as well, and I won't go through all of that with you.
Well, let's compare the one that's closest to TAC and see where there's, see where one outweighs the other. Let's identify where a UHC might be superior to TAC.
Well, as I said, the one that's on the further right, I believe they, it's as close to the TAC proposals they could get. The deductible's the same, out-of-pocket on an individual is the same, the family is actually less than TAC.
It looks like it's a 70/30, though.
It is a 70. It is a 70/30, but your office copay is 25, as opposed to 30, although you've got a $50 if they go, if they're not in a designated specialist network. It's a $75 urgent care copay, and drug card's a little bit better, and the rate's 10 bucks cheaper a month for employee-only.
Costs the families and their dependents more.
Little bit more. Yep, it does.
And it's, uh, less, more out-of-pocket for a family.
But, but your out-of-pocket is less for the family. It's 8,000 compared to 12.
Oh, I see that. Okay.
I was about to say, it does make a difference for the 70/30, out-of-pocket is the most you can be out-of-pocket.
Is, your out-of-pocket maximum is more important than your deductible now, because that's when your claims stop. There's no out-of-pocket cost for anything.
So even, even at 70/30, compared to 80, once you've gone over that 4,000.
Doesn't matter. Yeah. Exactly. They want your business.
Well, do they have a history of baiting people and then raising them up a whole lot?
I don't think so. I mean, I, I think like what John said, they, they write the majority of county businesses, and, um, I mean, they, they know what they're doing. They, they want to, to wrap y'all up. And United Healthcare wants to keep your business, and that's why they matched it, or as close as they could. I said 3% is the norm, every year.
I saw, we're, Camp County folks talking, after two years, they got a little rebate back for the county in that fund that they rebate, the way they're, they were ranked. Comes back to the county, and then you can do what you want to. You could actually refund it however you wanted to, to the employees, or put in a fund, or put it in general fund, or whatever.
Guys, y'all have any questions? You've seen the, you've seen the numbers here.
I don't.
How about we, uh, wait and talk to the TAC representatives Monday, and then we can make a decision on this, what we want to do for next year?
Okay. That'd be a good idea, give y'all some more time to think about this and read up on this. All right. Need a motion then?
Make the motion, we'll table it till Monday.
Motion to table any action related to TAC quote or insurance made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. There is nothing left on the agenda other than it is time for our flu shots. This Thursday, three days from now, come to the Annex Break Room. We'll be serving Starbucks and assorted pastries and flu shots. Oh, no Starbucks. Never, scratch that. 8:30 to 11:00, this Thursday, in the Annex Break Room. And of course, if you have a spouse, uh, there, that is eligible, bring them on. And as in the past, non-covered spouses and all others must pay $30, have to be at least seven years old. This Thursday, short notice, this Thursday, the 19th, Annex Break Room. Thank you, Carolyn. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if you all are ready.
Make a motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second Commissioner Parker. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.